So this is the Finance Committee of the Springfield City Council. It's our Finance Committee meeting of Monday, April 7, 2025. Thanks, everybody, for coming. We've got Roy and Sequoy, Kathy, Steve, Councillor Delgado. It looks like on TV land, we have Councillor Walsh, Lindsey Hackett, Chris Signoli, Zeta, Councillor Goban. I get everybody? Can you hear us out there?
I can hear you.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, well, welcome to the meeting. And we have an agenda of... How long is our agenda? Seven items. And the six, the first six are the ones that were on the committee report, kind of doing normal business. And the seventh one is on the budget issue that we all became aware of last week. So we'll get to that. So why don't we start with number one there, Mr. Lonigan? February Revenue versus Expenditure Reports, the eight-month mark.
All around the corner.
Two-thirds of the year.
Just about, yeah. And they, um, two-thirds of the year, sixty-six percent of the year. We've, uh, we're recognized that budget revenue-wise is at sixty-eight percent of the budget, and expenditure is at sixty-seven percent. So we're right on target, and I don't see anything crazy in the future right now. I won't bet my house on that, but right now it's good.
Looking good. And how you doing, Stephen? That's good. And you're subbing in for our former buddy, Mr. Pat Burns. Anything that looks concerning to you?
Not right now. Like I said, that may change, but right now we're looking good.
All right. Thank you very much. I just want to mention this now, that's not this one. Uh, that, you want this one? I didn't sub too many. Just want to mention to you that Water and Sewer is here tonight. The appointment of the three commissioners is up tonight. And two people got missed. Their terms have actually expired. Somehow they got missed. One is right on time to reappoint Vanessa, I think it's on. But last week, Victor and I had a ninety-minute meeting with them about Water and Sewer. It was, it was, it wasn't testy, but it was, things haven't been great with Water and Sewer, the quality of the water and rates going up all the time and stuff. So I just want to say this to you two from a finance standpoint. I asked them if they could do a report like the one you just did, kind of thing. And so we are, so I don't know if that's going to come up tonight, but it's something I'd like you to think about that, that, you know, they basically said it's going to go up six and a half to eight and a half percent per year for the next few years. And, um, it's become more of a problem, even though we don't own the Water and Sewer thing, they're separate, helping the constituents deal with that and be, have it be predictable or whatever. So any thoughts you have on that, what you do? I, they told us the, the, the information like you just gave us for the city is out there on their website and stuff. But I'm inclined to say, why don't you send it to us rather than us having to go find it? So just, I don't know if you're going to be around in the meeting tonight, but the reapportment of them is items two, three, and four. Yeah. Vanessa, followed by Dan Rodriguez, followed by Matt Donlin. And so anyway, just FYI for you. All right, item two.
I, Councillor Allen, I did have my, my hand up.
I did too.
All right, go ahead.
Yeah, um.
That way.
And Zion and I might be thinking the same thing, but, um, I don't see it on the agenda, but I would like to ask Steve, uh, you know, with all these cuts with the loss of forty-seven million, are there new plans being formulated? Is there something going on the council should be made aware of to be prepared?
That's item seven, Katie.
Is that seven?
That's item seven.
Oh, I see it, okay.
Uh, we added an on there when we all became aware of that cut last week.
Okay. But just quickly, are there any discussions about that, Steve?
We have had meetings on it, Kathy, myself, Lindsey, and we're trying to, and the school department, and see where it kind of falls out since, so that we can plan ahead. We can plan for any eventual outcome, but right now there's the state saying that...
The state has assured us that it's a business as usual, so to speak, and that they will refund us and will continue drawing down that forty-seven.
Okay, well, I'll wait to the end of the meeting. I'm just happy that we're going to have a, you know, that we should be made aware of what's going on.
Yeah, I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item two here, donation of goods to Elder of...
Councillor Allen?
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Zeta, I'm sorry.
That's okay, I was, that, that's not what I was thinking, Councillor Walsh, but we'll definitely get to that later. Uh, I guess my question for Steve was, um, regarding the finance, the February financial report. The funded vacancies that we've had, do you know how much money has been saved to date, Steve?
We're in the process of analyzing the salary sweeps right now. Uh, we're hoping to have that in time for the next meeting.
As, as you know, Councillor, we put a line item in the budget of one point five million that we have to sweep and make up that money. So that's what we're doing right now.
Okay. And what about the, um, the pay-as-you-go capital? And the four point one million saved so far?
So you want to know how much is in there right now?
Yes, please.
I don't have that number. I don't have that in front of me, but I can get it.
Yeah, that'd be great. Also, the, um, the March report, when do you think that might be available?
Well, the March report for the next council meeting, um, I'm hoping to cut up. We were just, uh, in time to get on this meeting. We're just closing March next day or so.
Okay.
So it's always a lot in that regard.
I, I know, it takes time. Thank you so much, Steve. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councillor Goban. All right. Item two, I think we got everybody who had their hands up. Uh, item two.
I'm sorry, I do have a question, Councillor. I didn't put my hand up, but, um, it was just a follow-up from what Kathy Bono said. If I may, Mr. Chair?
All right, go ahead. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Um, what, one point five million that we put into the budget?
Every year, the budget, the, uh, at the, we take the budget and we reduce it by, in this past year, we reduced it by one point five million. And that's our acknowledgement that we know there's going to be vacancy savings. So we took the total budget, we reduced it by one point five million, and then at this time each year, we sweep all the accounts that have extra money in it. And we have to make up, we have to get that negative one point five to a zero. So we sweep money, we put it in there. Anything above and beyond, um, will be extra, and that would be closed out to free cash, but we have to make up the first one point five million.
When does that happen, the one point five? Because I've never heard of that before, reducing the budget.
It happens during the budget time every year, and we have explained, it's explained that we do that. I think Councillor Allen remembers that.
Yeah, fifteen positions kind of thing that you were saying.
Right. It's the every year we do it. This year, we did one point five million, I believe. Lindsey, last year was FY twenty-four, was a, was it one point?
It was one point two. Tracy, um, you might know, it's, it's called uncompensated absences, and it's a negative number that's always built into the budget. Um, it's called uncompensated absences. You might know it better by that name because that's how it's in the Schedule A. But yeah, it's, that's vacancy savings is another word for it.
Okay, I didn't, I was just like, what? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. It's always the negative number that we build into the budget because we know vacancy savings are going to happen throughout the year.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Item two, donation of goods to Elder of...
Yeah, that'll be me. Um, this was for funds or donations we received from our Hungry Hills Senior Center, as part of the St. Patrick's Day, um, event they had and on the seventeenth of March. So that was a number of donations. Some was gift cards, some was, um, the Golden Age, like paid for food. So all that totaled up to eighteen hundred and...
Really? I mean, I was, I was at that. I go to that every year. And that money, is that money that paid for the goodies and all that?
Yeah, some, yeah, some of it was, um, gift cards that was into like the gift baskets. Some was money that went directly to the vendors, um, to pay for the foods. And others were just from the, um, the gift cards and the gift baskets that were there. So the total amount, when they went out looking for donations to help build these gift baskets and everything, including for the food and stuff, the total amount was eighteen fifty-five.
All right. Now I'll go into the general fund. Am I reading that right? I'm not reading it, but I might be saying it right. Does money came in, we spent it, or we're getting it?
It wasn't all cash donations. So some people just donated, say, a gift, a gift. And because it was a gift of, of value of sixty-five dollars or seventy-five dollars, the total amount of all the gifts that we received totaled up to eighteen fifty-five. And the, the money that they spent for the food directly to the vendor. So we had like the Golden Age, for example, paid a certain amount of money to the vendor to, uh, who made the sandwiches, or I think was Nathan Bills. And then there was another, um, outlet, uh, it was this, they're calling some of the Goodwill seniors. They, um, got some money and they paid the vendor as well directly. So we didn't get any cash donations in, per se, outside of the gift cards that we were able to, uh, go into the gift baskets and so.
That's good. All right, great. Any questions on that? Moving right along, looks like we have Councillor Nick Bruce on with us. Welcome, Councillor. All right, that, that item two. Item three, National Environmental Health Association Grant. No match required, eighty-five hundred dollars.
Go to the Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you, Sequoy.
So this is an eighty-five hundred dollar grant that our health department received from Nihon. Um, and this is going to be to work on an evaluation of Springfield's environmental health program in comparison to FDA standards. Uh, so we're going to do an audit on our current standards, sort of reconcile, um, and make improvements in accordance to FDA standards.
Is that something you as grants person are involved in at all? Or Helen just hires this group to come in and do it themselves?
Yes, yes, so Helen will control the whole process, sort of outsource, and have some of them come in and look at the current standards and sort of adjust as be.
Good, that sounds good. This is National Health Month, isn't it?
I believe so, yes.
April, April. There was some stuff this morning, there's stuff most days.
Public Health Month, yes, it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, Councillor Delgado, representing the council.
Yeah, we got it. So that was a good description or explanation by Sequoy. They're going to come in, this grant's going to, they're coming in and see how our health's, uh, processes or whatever line up against the national standards. Any questions on that?
Yeah, Stephen Howard, Magnette Neighborhood. To you, Mr. Chair, thank you. I've noticed that the air quality, especially when you're breathing in, it has this exhaust odor about it. I don't know if other people noticed it. Will that be part of the study that, uh?
Not that I'm aware of. No, it doesn't have anything to do with air quality, per se. I think it's more so FDA and food standards.
Where were you saying that?
Yeah, because, uh, what happens is, like, I'm really sensitive, right? So when I walk, even at home, while I'm lying down in bed, it smells like there's exhaust in the air, right? And when we turn on the air purifier, after about half an hour or so, the purifier says, okay, the air is good. But then, when I notice it and we check the, the air purifier, uh, ratings, there's always a level. And it's constant. And when I come outside, it's even stronger. So I, you know, I don't know what's causing that, but I'm really sensitive to stuff like that. So maybe that's something that you might want to, uh, mention. Maybe you might be able to get a grant to study the air quality because, uh, from the last report that I read, Springfield came down from number one to number seven in asthma rates. And if that's contributing to the asthma rates, then we need to find out exactly what's causing it and how to address it.
If I may, Mr. Chair, just to respond to Mr., um, our good friend there, Howard. Um, so the Public Health Institute, and I know that Sarita Hudson, um, with the Asthma Coalition did a lot of work on that. So I'm not sure if she might have some information for you, Mr. Howard, um, that might be of a beneficial to them. And I'm sure that they're still doing some studies on that. But getting a grant to study that would be amazing. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, thank you, Councillor Goban and Mr. Howard. Um, I mean, going back a long time, fourteen years or whatever, this is why we fought so hard to not build a biomass plant.
Right.
A lot of us involved in that, and eventually won. We don't have a biomass plant. And there was a large, large reason was the asthma rates in the city. So, um, I haven't kept up with that since. I, I saw that report recently, but that's something we should all be aware of. That's true. Thank you. All right. That was item three. Item four, bills of prior year, Police Department.
So random, randomly, we get yearly, and I think we had in the last meeting, there are bills that appear that unfortunately they were not paid in the right year. They were slipped through the cracks, or the department didn't realize that they owed them. So that these are two bills from the Police Department. One is to Motorola for ten thousand three hundred ninety-five dollars, and the other is to Springfield Tire and Auto for four hundred eleven dollars and eighty cents. Uh, so they're asking for the authorization from the council to pay them out of this year's funding.
Okay. Yeah, I got a question.
Do these pop up like?
I, I have a question.
Um, we've had a few, we have a few, a couple times. I think three or four times throughout the years, we come in front of the council, different people from, uh, with the police, with the Springfield Tire and Auto, they'll order a part and they won't, you know, get a purchase order, or they won't let the, um, accounts payable staff know about it, unfortunately. Or they, um, the, um, vendor doesn't bill for it, and they hold the purchase order open for a while. They ask if there are any, they don't get any bills, and then somebody does an accounting for the business, and then they find the outstanding invoice and they send it to us. We do confirm that we owe it, and if we owe it, we have to pay it. So they need council approval to use current year funds for these.
I guess the reason I'm asking is because I know in the Audit Committee, we do a lot of, uh, Mr. Noel does a lot of these things where he looks at processes and procedures for different departments. And to see that this is the second, second one, um, I'm wondering, you know, this is something that he should be looking to see if there's some inefficiencies, whether, and I'm not saying it's on the Police Department side, I'm just saying like...
Yeah, this is the second time.
This is the second time.
Time in a row for the Police Department. So I did, I have had that conversation with them. Um, and I, and I will speak to, uh, Young No about it. But yeah, unfortunately, with, uh, a lot of different departments within one department, they have a lot of, um, people ordering and things like that. So yeah, I, I have put the Police Department on notice that they have to do a better job because this isn't it, you know?
Well, it's not something you in finance knew about. It just pops up.
They let, they send it to us and let us know.
To your point, like, it could be something that, like, a, a vendor didn't put out, but that's still, like, we put in the order, we should be knowing that this stuff is on the books or that we're liable.
And vendors are told not to, uh, fill any orders without purchase order numbers.
Correct, so, but that's why.
But sometimes they do. They want the business and they will. They'll give it, they know the person who calls them, they order them, unfortunately. So it's, but it's on us, it's on the City Department to make sure that there are purchase orders and the communication. So I have had that conversation with the Police Department that they need to do a better job.
Councillor Walsh.
Okay, yeah, thanks, uh, Councillor Walsh, just your hand.
Thank you, Chairman Allen. Uh, my thought process was the same as my colleague, uh, Councillor Delgado. Uh, you know, I thought this was a misprint because we voted on something like this just, uh, the last couple of weeks. But Kathy, does that mean there's not one central person in the Police Department that bills go through?
There is a, there's the Accounts Payable Department, so there is. But when you're talking about the Springfield Tire and Auto, some, someone who's fixing a car, et cetera, picks up the phone and says, I need a tire. It's an emergency, they get it, and then they don't let the person, the Accounts Payable Department, know. So it, it's, it's, they do the best they can. Um, and but Springfield Tire and Auto, no, they're not supposed to do that without a purchase order number. So, but it's on us. It's totally on us, it's not on them.
The city has a bill, they have to pay it. But I, I think we all feel it should be a little more efficient.
And if I may, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, of course.
Um, you know, those are very small amounts of, you know, it seems comparative to what we have. But, um, I guess a question I would have is when these come up, are we going to be able to afford it? Especially like with all the potential cuts coming up. Um, those are just my thoughts. Thank you.
Through the chair, that's, and that's...
There's surprises.
Yeah, through the chair. That's why I brought it up, because like, these are small amounts, but like, you know, I would hope in the future that we don't have like something that's, you know, a big amount. We have to be like, oh, oh, you know. So that, that's why I asked the question about the, the audit, you know, the efficiency of the audit process, so.
Yeah.
It's good discussion, you guys picking up on it, and Kathy had a good answer, but, um, it sounds like my billing in my own household. My stuff just ends up in the wrong shoebox. So, and luckily, they involve in small amounts, Councillor. Uh, all right, that was item four. Thanks, everybody. Moving on to item five, order authorizing expenditure of fiscal year twenty-five Fair Share Amendment. Okay, it looks like DPW is up on item five and item six.
That's right, Councillor.
How are you? Goodness you.
DPW Director. Um, a couple of years ago, the state started the Fair Share Amendment, which is basically otherwise known as the Millionaire's Tax. Uh, in fiscal twenty-four, uh, the city received, I believe it was one point six million dollars, and we received it about two years ago. We actually received notification before the fiscal year. Uh, this notification is actually for the current fiscal year. So we're coming in at the end of the fiscal year. It is for forty-five million dollars statewide, uh, which translates to the city of Springfield for eight hundred and seven thousand dollars. Um, the money is put into our Chapter Ninety account. Um, and it has all of the, uh, rules and regulations associated with spending money uh, on our Chapter Ninety account. And what we, uh, have done is we've put that, we've taken that money, since it is this year's fiscal money, and added it into our, uh, paving program for this year. Uh, that's going to be going out to bid in the next week or so. The second item is the Chapter Ninety money. And over the past twelve years, the state has appropriated two hundred million dollars statewide. And finally, for this year, they have upped that amount to three hundred million. Uh, and are doing it over a five-year bond period. Uh, so the city of Springfield's receiving five point oh-three-five million dollars into our Chapter Ninety account. Um, and we're going to be using about four million of that for paving, uh, six hundred thousand of it for design and use for easements and takings, et cetera. Road maintenance, we do crack sealing at a hundred and fifty thousand. Traffic signals at a hundred and twenty-five thousand. And then we also use a small amount for support of salaries uh, for certain projects where, with the state at a hundred thousand. Uh, in the packet, um, that was submitted, and I'm not sure if it ended up getting through, there was an issue through the clerk's office. Um, we included the paving list for this year, and our paving list for this year is projected to be five point one million, which is essentially taking the four million that we targeted out of the, the, uh, Chapter Ninety, the eight hundred and seven. And then a couple of months ago, we received, um, I think it was rural roads money for about two hundred thousand. Uh, so our program going out to bid this year for twenty-five streets uh, is about five million. Uh, and we're doing about six, six point seven, uh, miles of roadway in the city, which may sound like a not, but we have over six hundred miles in the city to deal with. So, uh, our paving program, uh, as I said, is out to bid or will be out to bid in the next week or so, uh, for us to start sometime mid-May, uh, early June on that. And, uh, our paving program from last year has restarted, uh, as of two weeks ago, uh, for this spring, working on Roosevelt Avenue, Berkshire Avenue, Dwight Road, and, uh, a handful of other, uh, residential streets that still need to be done. So, uh, between the two accounts, uh, we've brought in about five point eight or so million dollars into our Chapter Ninety account. Uh, and so we'll be moving forward on the paving program for this year. Initially, when we were looking at it, it was three point six. Our paving program was going to be about four million. Then we were lucky enough to get the rural roads. Then we were lucky enough to get the, uh, uh, fair share. So we've been able to up it as we've gone along.
That's great. Great, so Chris, you've been hoping that that big number went, went up. It sounds like it finally did.
Yeah, it, it went up. It didn't go up proportionally because what they did is they kept the first two hundred million at the, uh, original calculation. And then the second calculation has a little bit of a skew towards the rural, uh, roadways because if we're getting three point six, you know, if we just, uh, add fifty percent to it, we should get about three point, or five point four. So we're a little, uh, over, or a little, just a little bit over five. So it's not a direct proportion, uh, but I will take the five, five million dollars, that's for sure.
That's great. Is the, as, as that has stayed kind of stable? Have the paving costs themselves gone up?
Oh, paving cost, if, if I did this eight years ago, I'd probably be doing forty-five streets. Uh, cost, uh, cost of pavement itself has probably gone from twelve, thirteen years ago, sixty dollars a ton, we're paying probably a hundred and seventy-five a ton now. Uh, and we're mandated on certain types of pavements that we have to use by the state because of their funds. So, yeah, costs have, have, have impacted us moving forward. Um, and like I said, we probably would have done forty, forty-five streets with this amount of money, and right now we're doing twenty-five.
Right, that's a lot of good information. Anybody have any questions for Chris? We got Cateri, Councillor Walsh.
Um, yeah, let me, let me ask my annual question about paving back Magnolia Terrace, which I think I have, I've been asking for twenty years. Uh, is Magnolia Terrace, what's on the list in the park? Hopefully, something begins with M.
I'm looking at my list here, I don't have the neighborhoods on this list.
You know, but people ask me about this all the time.
I'll have to pull it up, I'm just looking at it real quick. Uh, Elsay Street, which I know is off of Carver. Uh, da, 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 Wheeler, that's in East Forest Park. Belfour is in East Forest Park. Uh, and Locust. And I think that is it for Forest Park. I know I'm missing one, I'm trying to...
You mentioned Dwight Road before.
Excuse me?
You mentioned Dwight Road.
Yeah, Dwight Road was actually on last year's list. So we're starting, we're starting up what was left over from last year's list. And that's the section down by the golf course.
So constituents who have streets that are on the list?
Excuse me?
Constituents who have streets that are not on this list. What do we tell them?
When we get more money next year, we'll, we got a list of, I've got a list of probably sixty-five streets that need to be done, or excuse me, uh, over a hundred streets that need to be done, that total about twenty-five million dollars. So basically, I'm picking the worst, uh, that I have on the list and, um, moving all over the city to make sure I'm hitting every neighborhood.
Well, I think...
One of the ones I know we're doing, Cateri, we're doing Cherryville.
Yeah.
Uh, Cherryville's, uh, they, as a matter of fact, they were probably out there in the past couple of days, starting, I believe, Cherryville.
Well, getting close, but not a home run.
All right. Has anybody else got any questions for Chris? We have Councillor Goban, I see.
Thank you, Phil. So the paving that's happening now that I'm seeing, I saw some on Berkshire Avenue, um, and other, is that from last year's or is that this year's?
Yeah, that's from last year's. We usually start paving in June. And, uh, because of the way the money used to come in, we have to kind of wait for some of it for the fiscal year to start July first. So that's all leftover from last year. Uh, trying to get, uh, you know, those major streets obviously done as well.
Right, right. Well, I know it's a big job and I'm really glad that um you're uh leading this, but we'll keep coming to you for more. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Won't be the only one.
I know.
Counselor, uh, Counselor Winfield, next, thanks.
Thank you. Um, Chris, my question isn't about paving and it's going to be quick, but I hate what they did to Big Y with the one entrance over in E uh E Springfield. Is there any way we could get another entrance?
There's, they they have a a couple of other entrances that are, they're kind of shut off now. Uh, but the ma- the the major issue that was happening there, uh, it's part of a state project, state design. Uh, the number of accidents that were happening at those other entrances were were large. And at the main entrance, uh, that's being proposed now is going to be signalized to be able to, there were just too many entrances there before. Uh, so when the signals and everything become active and final paving, I think it'll be a lot better getting in and out. The south side kind of like down by um uh, street in that area, those entrances are still going to be there. And I believe there's two, maybe three of them. So those are going to stay there.
Yeah, it's the, it's the long drive to Big Y. And then even when I go in there to turn into where the dollar store is.
Yeah.
Um, or general dollar, um, it's like people are driving through the parking lot to come back through that entrance. And or they're driving straight to get there. And there's no, there's like no rhyme or reason to get to that entrance. So they're just like, when you turning in, they're just like cutting you off and things like that. So I'm wondering what's going to be done about that.
Well, the the internal, uh, the in, the internal layout of that whole area is going to change, new striping. So that's kind of at the end of the project. So they're going to be doing a lot of that work. We got to move some signs as well. Uh, as part of the project. So yeah, they got to restripe a lot of that stuff inside there. Um, pro- you know, they'll probably be over the next two, three months. They'll be doing that.
Yeah, because right now it's dangerous. Like today I almost got hit turning in to go to TD Bank. And someone was driving like probably straight from like the dollar store, but straight through the parking lot, kind of at an angle trying to get to the exit. It was just crazy. So hopefully the stripes work, but.
Hopefully, yeah, we got the same problem with the one over by my house and 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 just in East Long Meadow where everybody flies through the parking lot as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Um, I don't see anybody else there. Um, Stephen Howard, do you have a question?
Yeah, thank you again, Mr. Chair. Um, Mr. Signoli. Being, I live on Worthington Street. After the the road was patched, now those holes are back. Uh, the material that's being used, is that one of the reasons why those patch holes are just compromised to the fact that they whereby they go back to the way they were before they were patched?
If if we patched them uh before, I'm going to say before, I'm going to say a week and a half ago, all that material was cold patch. Um, so especially like a day like today, the rain just eats that stuff up. If there are still potholes there that need to be done, uh, right now we're using permanent patch. So I can send my guys over there tomorrow to take a look at that. Which section of Worthington?
Uh, that's between uh, which on the triangle path down to where where it goes down into the hill.
Okay. Okay.
So so let's say from uh St. James to Boden.
Yep.
Thank you, sir.
I'll make a note of that.
Thank you. I've, I had that same question from a constituent yesterday. Um, I didn't know how to handle the question. I just, I've heard, but questioning the material that we use, couldn't be better material because things um, don't seem to hold for long.
Yeah, the cold patch stuff that's manufactured during the winter. Uh, like I said, I think it was, I'm going to say two weeks ago Wednesday, we could now get permanent patch. So a lot of the cold patch stuff, some of it heals, you know, probably about twenty percent of it works. The rest of it after time, like I said, especially a day like today with the rain just eats it up. And you know, we've been spending the last two weeks with two full crews and the road patcher out doing that. So what I always tell the residents is that you may have called three weeks ago and we fixed the pothole and it's back, you know, don't hesitate to get back to three one one to make sure we get to it.
Is there basically two types of patching cold?
Yeah, the during the winter, they uh, the entities around here do not make permanent asphalt. The weather doesn't allow them to do it, so they use cold patch. Uh, which is, you know, it's decent, uh, but you know, once you get the any sort of water in it and driving over it, it just starts to break up and kind of turns back to gravel uh, over a period of time. But the uh, the permanent stuff that we're getting now holds up pretty good.
All right, good. All right, so we have to act on item five and six. Um, see if we approve them. We approved the other ones, one through four. Item five was the fair share amendment. Item six is authorizing the expenditure of the five million dollars of chapter ninety funds. Does anybody want to?
Uh, counselor.
We usually vote at the end. I, we just usually vote at the end. I'm sorry, Chris.
Now, the only thing I wanted to add is I am not sure if all of the documents made it into the packet. Uh, there was an issue of of uh the size of the overall document for this meeting and some of my documents may have been cut off. Uh, for example, like the letters from the state themselves in the paving list. So uh, if that is not in the packet, when I get into the council tonight, I'll try to get copies for everybody.
That'd be good.
I just have a question.
Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Delgado.
Just on the um issue of number five, the fair share amendment, I know that that money that comes in, it's kind of allocated to different allotments. Is the chapter ninety the only piece of those funds that we get that the municipality gets from the state?
Um, in in the use of being it to give us a little bit of a broader use of what we use it for, yes. Uh, the only other money we get from the state, i- it's, they've done a couple of different things over the years, but it all ends up in our chapter ninety account. Couple of weeks ago or a couple of months ago, we had uh rural roads. There's actually some talk again about doing some winter roadway repair stuff that came in. When we apply for a grant, that does not, and we get approved for that, whether complete streets, shared streets, those go into different accounts specifically for a project. These these funds go into our chapter ninety that allows us to do uh, a few more different things with the money. Uh, obviously I want to use paving, but uh, we use it for design and for some other things as well. But I really wanted to take this eight hundred thousand and just use it all for paving.
Okay. Well, I guess I I was gonna kind of looking at you guys too over here. So to my, to my understanding, that's the only thing we get from the fair share amendment is it goes towards um, like roads and infrastructure.
There, there's it, there's an education piece, but I have no idea how that gets counted.
Yeah, because I know there's like a K through twelve, there's public higher ed, which I know is not us, and there's you know, some stuff to the RTA. So I just kind of wanted to know specifically as far as the municipality is concerned, is this what we specifically, because there's K through twelve. So I didn't see anything about any money is going to K through twelve, but that would be, that would be them.
Yes.
Yeah.
So I guess I was just trying to clarify, is this the only funding that we directly see from the fair share amendment?
There, there's shit, I'm I'm going to, I'm not to to speak for the school department, but there, the uh, when the amendment was passed, um, it was for education, transportation, and there was one other thing. So uh, I have no idea the total amount they put into the amendment uh, statewide, other than the forty-five million for the transportation.
I see here, there's, there's like roads and bridges, um, so construction, reconstruction, uh, trans- transportation, infrastructure, art, you know, so art for us, the RTAs. Um, early ed, public college universities and K twelve, so, all right.
Yeah, and I have no idea what they did for funding for the other pieces.
Got it. Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Delgado. So we have now done the six items that were the original agenda. So at some point now or later at the end, we have to entertain a motion from Counselor Walsh or Counselor Delgado. Um, because we need to, well, we need to try to vote on those. Um, but um, that can be later. So that grants us to item seven. So last week, um, we heard about this budget situation in the school department where some money that we expected to get was was not going to be available, et cetera. Um, several of you reached out to me. I tried to update people. Uh, Steve Lonergan put a nice email out at some point. I, and I put something out a day or two later trying to uh, just get you up to speed. I I had talked to Lindsay with Kathy out. I talked to Lindsay about how it was impacting us. And then the other thing we did was put it on this agenda, uh, so we could all be brought up to speed. So it's ten after six, we still got a little time. Could somebody, Kathy or you or somebody on your team?
We have been in constant contact with uh, school department and the state about these funds. These are Esser funds. Um, and the Esser funds had to all be obligated by September thirtieth of twenty twenty-four was the deadline. And then the um Fed, US Department of Federal um, Education Department approved what they called a late liquidation approval. And that was that they, we requested it to carry over funds. We had encumbered the funds, we had set them to projects. They had to approve that we could go beyond the deadline after they were encumbered. They gave us their approval on October twenty fourth that we could actually, and the actual amount of the approval was for fifty-eight million. So, and they extended the um fifty-eight million late liquidation funding. And we received that from the federal government. Um, to date, we have received reimbursement of eleven point one million, and that's where you get the balance of the forty-seven. The way these, the funds have to be drawn monthly and they can, there's no advancing. They all have to be reimbursement. The projects have to be completely closed. Which means if I pay a bill for ten thousand, I can't then request for ten thousand dollars. It has to be, the, all the contracts have to be submitted, the permits have to be um closed and submitted. All the bills have to be paid, the architectural drawings all have to be stamped, everything has to go in one big packet and that um, project has to be done before they can submit for reimbursement. And with this late liquidation funding approval, they were giving them until March of twenty twenty-six to finish. So they did get that approval back in October. They had until March of twenty-six. This letter that came out from the federal government said that they were terminating. So we've been on the phone with the state because the funds go through the state and the state then gives us the funding. Um, the, all the work is ongoing. Most of it is ninety percent done. There's only some HVAC that's only seventy percent done. So we were in line to finish way before March of twenty-six. Um, but again, according, we did get an email from DESI, which is the State Department of Elementary and Secondary Education on April first, that said they will continue to operate normally on a reimbursement basis with respect to all these funds. They, they intend to reimburse us for all forty-seven million.
DESI?
Yes.
And the money goes through DESI?
The money goes through DESI. And then if there is a problem with DESI getting it from the federal government, DESI will take that, take that on with the federal government. That we should continue, continue, finish our projects, continue as is, continue submitting projects um every month. And our next submission is going to be April twentieth, and it will be for approximately around ten million dollars.
Could you explain what Esser is?
Esser is elementary and secondary school emergency relief funds.
So like the ARPA version?
Yeah, it was for the schools.
So it was the student version?
Yeah, they just, the ARPA, we got, we, they gave us the cash. The Esser, they have to request it down, but they require them to do everything upfront. The whole project has to be done, signed off everything and submitted before they reimburse it.
It was all physical building?
Yes, there's HVACs, there is HVACs, there's playgrounds, there's amphitheater, there's practice fields, there's gym and auditorium, there's a wellness center, there's STEM outdoor classrooms and a playground sweeper.
The, there was some question, at least in the paper, about the amphitheater at SciTech. Was that, is is that in the to be done category?
It is, the design is done. We've paid a million dollars out for design. I guess the shell, and I don't actually know what the shell is, but that's should be in any day. So that is going forward also.
That is going forward.
Yes. They said, the state said to continue on, continue all the projects, finish them and keep submitting our um requests for reimbursement, and they will honor those requests.
So let's just say something goes wrong, whatever it is, would it hit, would it hit the school department? Um, for us? Would it, it would both or would it hit us as well?
It would hit us, counselor.
Okay.
It's not eligible for net school spending, any of these costs. So these costs would have to go to uh.
In in a worst case scenario, what would that mean to us? We need to come up with a certain amount of money, whatever didn't get rid. And our options in that case would be?
Free cash if we had any, and then stabilization, our reserves.
How about bonding?
If it's already, the project's already done, basically. Uh, or had started, most of them, only some are at seventy percent, the rest are at ninety, ninety-nine percent. We can't go backwards in bonding, so it would be our uh reserves.
Okay, couple of questions yet. Uh, Counselor Walsh?
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Kathy. You always explain it so that the layman can understand. But did I? So, uh, is what you're saying is this forty-seven million dollars in in cuts that we've been reading about is something that another fund will cover and this city will not be impacted, but if the city is impacted, it comes from the city side and not the school department?
It, there are Esser funds which um go from, go from the federal government through the state to us. And what the state has said is they will reimburse us and they will work on getting the money out of the federal government. So it is, there's, it's the same pot of money. They will work on if if there's a problem with getting it.
Well, I mean, if if you read anything, it looks pretty obvious, there might be a problem. But in other words, all these um projects that people are counting on will still go forward?
They are going forward, yes. And most of them are almost done. It's the HVACs that are only seven. Some of the schools that are getting eight new HVAC system are, it's only seventy percent done. And again, you have to wait for when you can do it in the school. You have to wait for the patients in the summertime to finish the HVAC systems.
But to follow up with what Counselor Allen asked about, if there is a problem or anything changes, where the the money comes from the city side?
It has to, yes, counselor.
Well, that'd be a lot of money to have to try to make up.
Yeah, but we, uh, the state has insured us and we are, I mean, we have signed contractual agreements with the federal government. They directly approved this carryover funds. They've been directly approved all these projects. So um, we're confident, and that's why the state's confident that in the end they'll be able to get the money. But we have, we are going forward.
It's a little better than we read in the paper and stuff, so that's great. Um, Counselor Winfield is up.
Um, I think Kathy answered the questions I had. The only um additional question that I have is if we had to use forty-seven million of stabilization funds, where would that put us as far as the like five percent goals that we have to have in there?
That would be a problem, counselor.
It will, it will put us under?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we're seven point seven. That's why we try to build that up. Or, I mean, we never thought, but I, you know, after speaking with everyone we did, I I I do think we are okay in the situation. I can't guarantee it, but.
Yeah. Yeah, um, what, so where are we at in the stabilization fund?
We have approximately uh, a little over seventy-one million right now. And so, and that's a.
Oh, yeah.
So seven, seven and a half percent. So if you take forty-seven off that, you're gonna be well below it.
Yeah, well below. Okay, thank you.
All right, great. Thank you. There's another, and Counselor Govan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Kathy, thank you so much for that because um, a lot of the residents are out here asking questions and very concerned about the school department. So I really appreciate that explanation and I'm hoping and will continue to pray that everything will be all set and we won't have to worry about um this. Um, unfortunately, as we know, things happen daily and and new concerns come up. Um, and whenever those concerns come up, my constituents reach out to me and express them to me. So um, I'm just really glad that this is good news today. Um, and I'll just keep praying that we're going to continue to get good news. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome, Council Govan, thank you. Uh, we got there on the left. Uh, Council Davila, I'm sorry, I didn't announce you when you joined the meeting, but do you have a question?
Uh, yes, I was wondering if you didn't see me, good afternoon, sir, I do have a question. Kathy, good evening, did you already answer some of my questions, which is that if we need to cough up this money, we're coming from the, the city side? And it appears to me from what you're saying is that the state has told us that we're going to get the money? And to move forward with, with the plans that we have. Of course, there's no guarantees, I'm sure you have plan B and plan C, should we not get this money? Because it's going to be detrimental, huge blow for the city budget. Also to interject and say that this is another reason why we must continue to push for the pilot program. To ensure that our partners join us in payments of lower taxes, because this is the reality, we need money. So Kathy, do you have a plan for plan B and C, if we don't get the money?
Uh, no, counselor, I don't, I mean, we'd have to use reserves. I mean, the project's already done, I can't put a stop to the projects. I can't, an HVAC system that's seventy percent done, I can't say, okay, stop that. But we got an email from DESI on April first, it said they will continue to operate normally on a reimbursement basis with respect to these funds. So a, at this point right now, we're confident, yes, I mean, if the city has to come up with it, we'll have to come up with it. We'll use a combination of free cash and reserves, and it won't put us in a good financial position. But that's why it's been great that the council has approved and has put aside funding in, into the reserve account every year. So we can build up these reserves. So, so I don't have a B or C, I hope I don't have to, you know, every, we're, I mean, we're looking at everything every day, every day, something new. Now, they're trying to cut departments, they're trying to combine departments, they're trying to do this. So we're just taking it day by day, step by step, which I think every city, town, state, nonprofit and for-profit business is doing right now.
Yeah, yeah, I, I hear Kathy, I mean, you, you guys are the expert, the financial expert, not me, but I, I am anxious. I am very anxious, like we all, I'm sure you're pretty anxious yourself, Kathy, on this. I don't want to put all my basket in the hopes that the state and the federal government is going to give us the money. At some point, maybe offline, you know, we can continue discussing plan B, C, and D. I'm a true believer in that, and again, Mr. Chair, this is one of the reasons why myself and the pilot committee continues to push for the pilot. And there's going to be good, good news coming in the future, good works that will be doing this. Because we need our, our nonprofit partners to help and jump in on this time, during this time of need. Kathy, thank you, I look forward to see you later on today, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor, I see Counselor Whitfield's hand is up again.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment, and, well, really ask a question to Kathy. Is this something that MGM funds would be eligible for, as well as like marijuana taxes?
Well, we would look into everything, if we could, so.
Cause I think like some of that money has been for MGM related funds have been committed, but I don't know if they have been spent. And maybe we, that will be something we would have to like wait on. As far as nonprofits goes, me running one myself, we are getting cut from the federal government as well. So to like think that they have like a bunch of money to expend to payment in lieu of taxes? Is really hopeful, wishful thinking. A lot of them are cutting staff because federal government are not paying them, federal government are also doing things like. Um, firing people from different departments that are supposed to look at expending the money to nonprofits. So I, I don't know if that's the solution as far as pilot goes, but I just know where nonprofits stand currently. They are being, being cut as well, and so it's just like a sad situation all the way around.
It seems to me that, I appreciate everybody's concern, seems to me that we've done a fairly good job of building up that reserve, and, and, and. We, we have pretty strong principles about how we run the finances here. Thanks to the, to the mayor and the finance team, and the council supporting as much as we can. You know, it sounds like with a little luck, we might, we might avoid this one, but appreciate the update, Kathy. And if you would just let us know if it starts to smell.
Yep, I'd like to know when we put in how much the request will be on the twentieth, and then when we receive it, or if anything changes. But we, we, I'm on the phone with the school department every day, and they're on the phone with DESI, the state agency, almost every day.
Okay, that's good to know, for, yeah, Stephen Howard?
Yes, Stephen, again, thanks again, Mr. Chair. Now, for folks who may not be aware of where these cuts are, what grades are being, are you, are facing these cuts?
What, school grades?
What, what, yeah, like.
Oh, it's, it's their projects through all these different schools, so it's not a one grade. They're not being cut, these are, these are physical improvements to playgrounds and buildings.
So it doesn't impact what's happening now, as far as education is concerned?
Education, no.
It's not about child.
Not instruction.
No, it's physical improvements, the HVAC systems, improvements of their playgrounds, improvements to the actual physical outdoor class, classrooms like that. The city uses their ESER funds not for salaries, et cetera, they use them a majority for physical improvements to the schools.
Because when this first came out.
It was sounding, it sounded different.
Some people.
Right.
Probably sounded different.
Yeah.
That's why you have to just kind of, kind of stick to your knitting and get the good, good information from people who know. This is totally different from what I read in the paper, that's why I pay attention really to that, I pay attention to what Kathy and Steve tell us, you know, so. It's interesting, but it's kind of, kind of made it sound worse than it is, maybe let me write, I hope they're not.
Yeah, because what I'm getting from the, from the community is, how does this impact pre-K, right? What about the food?
This has nothing to do with, I mean, and I'm not saying they're not doing other cuts over somewhere else, but this particular funding, the forty-seven million they're talking about are ESER funds? That are for physical improvements to the different schools.
Okay, and I just wanted that to be explained for folks who, you know, watching or will love on later. Because there's a lot of panic going on out there right now. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Well, it's on groups like us, who know more now about it, those of you who took the time to come to this meeting, counselors? And other people from the community who are interested in, it's on us to make sure that there, that the level of alarm is not where it was. That, that this is manageable, it sounds like, and not affecting instruction, that's what I'm hearing. And hopefully, it will, you know, that's one of the responsibilities of being on the inside of knowing stuff that the public may not know, is to, is to keep. Keep things reasonable and, and factual with what's going on, as opposed to alarmist. Yeah.
Yeah, if I, if I may, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Uh, so that was one of the main reasons why, you know, thank you to, to Counselor Allen, putting this on the agenda. Because a number of us had, had, had those same questions, and we all reached out to him to say we need answers so that we can communicate that to the residents. To make sure that what we read wasn't really, you know, so I really appreciate him throwing it on there, because a number of us asked for this to be on here to get that clarification. With that being said, it's, I'm appreciative of the fact that DESI is gonna back up the cities and towns. Because without DESI, then yes, this would be a problem, right? And so having that backing from the state, letting us know that, you know, for us to continue what we're doing. Because it sounds like many of these projects are a hundred percent done, or seventy percent done, so these dollars are owed. So, so we have that safety net as of right now, and appreciate any fighting that the state will do on our behalf. But just to clarify, this was something that we all asked for, so.
Yeah, appreciate, I heard from you right away, Counsel Delgado, heard from Counsel Whitfield right away, maybe a couple others. That's why I sent Steve's memo around as soon as I got it, and I gave you an update later in the week from myself, after what I, after talking to Lindsay. So I appreciate your concern, it shows that we have a responsible group, wants to make sure we, we handle our business the way we should, so. And thanks to you, Kathy and Steve, and the rest of the finance team, Sequoia, everybody, you know, for keeping us informed and keeping it. On the, you know, on the down low kind of thing, so, so we're not, who we got? So Counsel Davila and Counsel Whitfield, let's go to Counsel Davila.
I'm sorry, Counsel Govan had her hand raised first, I believe, and has.
My question was answered, though, um, thank you, Counsel Whitfield, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Davila, are you all set?
I think he didn't really put his hand up.
I'm only seeing Counsel Whitfield with a hand up.
I just wanted to explain why the city is paying, because facilities management includes school buildings. And facilities management is handled by the city of Springfield. And so the ESER fund's going to fix the repairs on the school buildings is still managed by the city of Springfield. So that's the reason that we will be on the hook, so usually park, member parks and facilities. I don't know if facilities is still under Tom Ash, it used to be under Pat, it used to be a budget I did. So schools management, like updates and things like that, fell under facilities management, and not necessarily under the school department. So I just wanted to kind of clarify that a little bit.
Thank you, we got another hand up, Counsel Walsh?
Yes, I, I just have, through the chair, I just have a question as a, a member of the committee. I, I don't have any issues with items one, two, three, four, five, great explanation for seven. But I know that item six, anything to do with paving, is an issue that impacts all the councilors. And I'm not comfortable passing that until we hear from the entire council. So, I'm gonna make a recommendation that we favorably pass one, two, three, four, five, and seven. And wait on six until the full council gets a opportunity to discuss it.
Hey, um, so we don't, we don't vote on it here, we vote on it just as a recommendation, the full, so the recommendation is just, you know.
Well, I'm, I'm not comfortable with six, so you do what you want, but I know this always comes up as an issue.
So, Counsel, I'm happy to second it, I know number seven is more informational.
Yeah.
So I would second, you know, us doing one through five to push it forward. And then for, for Chris to give us more explanation of what's going on with six or some of the listings, what to provide us.
Particularly, I mean, all, all large councils will be, are obviously interested, but I'm, I'm sure all ward committee members will want to know what's going on in their districts. They always do.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve items one through five.
Correct.
Uh, seconded by, proposed by Counsel Walsh, seconded by Counsel Delgado, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, I'm in favor, so that's three of us on that, Steve?
Counsel Click Bruce, I would give a question for something.
Oh, sorry, I didn't, you know, I saw the vibe there.
Counsel Click Bruce, are you out there? Questions, sorry.
Yeah, it's not, it's not on the motion, so I just had a, pretty much a comment.
Okay, so we voted on that, so the.
Okay.
So items one through five are passed, item six, we didn't have a motion on that to approve that, so we'll take that to the council meeting. Item seven was informational, so we can certainly pass on the information, but we don't really need to vote on it. So Counsel Click Bruce, did you have something else?
Yeah, I just really wanted to thank you, Chair, I just really wanted to thank Kathy Bono and all the finance team for the clarification on item seven. Like my counselors already said, this was a, a big conversation in the community. And a lot of, with a lot of meetings coming up with our civic association, I think this is right on time to get clarification as to what's going on. So thank you, Kathy, thank you, Counsel Tim, and the team that handles the finance department. For the city council, for the information and putting this on the agenda, thank you.
Uh, great, thank you for saying that, it's nice. Yeah, Stephen Howard, yes?
Yes, thanks again, Mr. Chair. One of the main things that people will bring into my attention was, why is Springfield getting a forty-seven million cut? And all of the other areas will receive a less than one million cut? And the whole, you know, like, I don't want to use the word racism, question started popping up. Well, forty-five million from us, and they don't even, none of them have one million? And that was a major concern, and, you know, like, I was just seeing to a lot of comments, which I can't repeat here. Because the language wouldn't be appropriate for the, for the meeting. And, you know, I think this is one of the main reasons why people were so in an uproar when they saw forty-seven compared to eight hundred thousand or whatever, you know, whatever the number was.
So I'm sure a lot of us looked at it and said, kind of to ourselves, what is, what's that about? You know, I guess we have to say Kathy just told us what it's about, because we have projects.
We used the physical improvements, which took a while. The smaller communities didn't get as much money as we did, but a lot of other communities, as you've read, used it for teacher salaries, they used it for programs. They used one-time money for things that they, I guess they shouldn't have, because then they've had to lay off teachers. We use them for physical improvements, we got more money than a lot of the other towns that you're talking about. And we, we only carried over that much because our, our programs were still ongoing. We had supply chain issues, we had, you know, timing with the schools. So we, everyone got their share of the money, ours was just more because we had, we did all physical improvements with our money.
Thank you.
That's a good explanation.
Yeah, if I may, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, thank you, Kathy, for that, because that's exactly what I was thinking about. Because when I saw the large amount that we got cut, that meant that we must have gotten more money in the beginning. So that's exactly what I've been telling, trying to tell people, so, Mr. Howard, you can let them know that too.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So I don't see anybody else's hands up, it's kind of quiet in here, those of us over here in person. So thanks, everybody, for your level of engagement and your questions, and I hope we got everything answered. And we'll bring to the, the meeting approvals for one through five. Alright, thanks, everybody, have a great night.
Thank you, have a good night.